I know, I just heard that one.
Hello.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
He's turning it on.
Is it on now?
I guess.
Well, that was his battery.
No, this battery is good.
Yeah, it should be on then.
Yeah, I'll switch him, how's that? All right.
Well, I, we can, all of us yell pretty loud.
What's that?
All of us yell pretty loudly here. I can hear you.
I know, I have, I know, my voice carries, but honestly Jeff doesn't.
Jeff can speak.
Jeff and Amy are the only ones.
Jeff and Amy's.
I, Sue's though even worse, when you hear the recording, Sue is the most difficult.
That's good for this side.
Yeah.
Because you, you speak very soft.
Did Jeff just get a wheelie chair and go over?
No one's ever said that to me before.
I yell, only because my mother calls Jeff, so.
Your voice carries.
You can hear me all the time, right? Pepper, where are you? I was looking for my cat.
Oh, gosh.
I was looking for Pepper. Pepper. Well, there's Fox in our neighborhood, isn't he, did you see him? Yeah, but she hangs over by Jowells mostly, Roberson? They have a den somewhere, they're looking for food, but it looks very healthy. They're in.
We'll start without, oh, yeah, again. So I think Sophie's during the WBA, she's gonna do the presentation. So I think that's what this is.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Testing, testing.
I can't hear you.
I know, it's not working.
Thank you, Tom Frank. Can you hear me now?
Yes, better without them.
That one's good.
There you go, that one works, all right. We're good.
Oh.
Hold it.
All right. All right, we'll start?
Yes.
Six fifteen. Sorry for the delay, technical difficulties. All right. Village Board Work Session for April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, beginning at six fifteen P. M. We have no guests this evening. I just want to remind people that we will have guests in May. We haven't confirmed date yet, but one will be Gomez and Sullivan, the engineers that wrote the dam study, the firm that wrote the dam study, and then we will have Mark Burke coming in.
Oh, cool.
Opposite that to discuss primarily some information for some tree removal in a flood, the flood plain.
Oh, thank you.
He's going to do a much better job of explaining it tonight.
And will we have anyone coming from the police department?
We do have Captain Pearson's coming.
He is coming at first May.
At first May, so we need.
Next week.
Captain Pearson. We could do Mark Burke and Captain Pearson's, and then I think we'll, we, but we have to go make the Sullivan individual.
The next one?
Yeah, so let's shoot through that.
That takes more time to let everybody.
Only day, yeah.
There's two. Yeah, there's two meetings in May, yeah.
Or maybe morning.
We have to move Memorial Day one?
Yeah, in the summer, but, yeah, we gotta get those meetings in.
We have two meetings.
We do in June as well.
So, the twelfth and the twenty sixth.
Twenty seventh, twenty sixth is Memorial Day.
That's why I didn't say.
Yeah. And then June two, and then July and August one. Reorg and then August one. Okay? All right, Community Development, a Kepart grant update, please.
Okay. So, TAP grant is not officially open for twenty twenty five, we don't know if that's going to open this year, we're waiting, that's a federal grant, so we're just waiting to hear from DOT if that is slated to come out this year. The only other update I have is for municipal planning grant, that's for our comprehensive plan update. We are appointing two of our county representatives from Erie County Planning to the committee just to satisfy the grant requirements for our contract. Our first public workshop, which will be open for residents to attend, will be at South High School on Tuesday, May thirteenth, at six thirty P. M. We'll be waiting for it usually.
Everybody getting postcards on that, mailed to the, and then we've got it from the app, I think on the app or the website.
Yes.
Or else it'll be public, okay? Okay, good.
As far as updates go. Can you still edit out about three hundred downloads? Yes.
Yeah, so we're gonna do a push to get a little more. Okay, download. Well, let's just say now, if you haven't downloaded our app, please do, we'll mention it again during the meeting, if you haven't downloaded our app, please do. So we have, we can get some more folks to, it's actually fairly helpful.
Are we gonna put it on the marquee?
For the app.
Yeah, I think we should.
It's a good time of year to download it, too, there's a historic walk-in tour that you can do with the app, so if the weather gets nicer, it's good to get out and.
There you go. Yeah, perfect.
Maybe just have a little reminder on the marquee, we have an app, and then just put the W W dot, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can they just make sure the dates for future committee board meetings are matching what's on the website, too?
A little discrepancy there? Was there a little discrepancy there?
One.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Anything else? And the sort of, yeah. Yeah, so, comp plan update, you did, right, public work show up. There's also a Visit Buffalo Niagara mural, mural, that's going on right now, so the WBA hosted a presentation by Visit Buffalo Niagara and shared the exciting news that on Main Street in the village has been chosen as a location for a new piece of public art, one that connects neighborhoods across our region. Local artist.
Yangs.
Yangs. Has been commissioned by the V B N Bureau to assemble a built-like mural across Western New York, featuring a singular theme and individual squares unique to each community. So residents in the village are encouraged to submit their ideas on what makes Williamsville special. You can find the link to submit your ideas on our website or the W B E, W B A Facebook page. So I think that's a great opportunity, and I know everybody's finding some, some good spots there. We also have for the hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary coming up, Sweet Jenny's Ice Cream has offered to partner with the village to create a custom ice cream flavor to celebrate the hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary. We also wanted to thank our friends at the D P D S store in the Young's Plaza, who generously donated banner, beautifully enlarged replica vintage photos such as this one, all to make the village feel more festive this summer. So some of the local businesses will be getting like these poster boards to keep them.
That was done at the U P from, by Jaclyn, really, what a great job.
And it's double sided.
It's double sided?
So you can see it in the window, and then if you're shopping.
Wow.
Or dining, you can see it inside.
What did you give her, just a photograph?
Yeah, she took.
She did a really nice job.
And she worked with their graphic designers, yeah, it looks really nice, so.
I didn't realize Jaclyn did, excellent, very nice.
And there will be on there a.
Q R code?
Or no, is that, is there a Q R code on there for the history, or is that?
Oh, I mean, we can, we can link it to the app if we want to, that's a great, that's a great idea.
So let's do that, and then the Jolly Boys logo?
Yes.
Is going to be on there as well?
Yeah.
So, all the good things, but yeah, we could just, let's say a Q R code, that would be.
I love it, fabulous, nice job.
They'll give us. Yeah, they're, they're really great to work with, so we really appreciate them. Poppy Day, Friday, May twenty-third is National Poppy Day. The Village of Williamsville will have fondies available in Village Hall for residents on starting week first. Donations are accepted on behalf of the American Legion of Zillinger Lamp Post Twenty-two and one hundred percent of proceeds benefit Veterans Services. That's that. So for the budget, you guys are going to be adapting the budget, I do have copies of them here if you want to see. As soon as we get our finalized numbers for this year, then I'll bound the books for you guys, and you'll get those, they'll be tapped and bound there. But if you have any questions, let me know. The only thing that's changed since you guys last saw it was that it had to go a little bit lower on revenue to account for the pilot coming up, the Mindstone Law pilot, it was a little bit less than we thought, so that was the only thing since you guys last saw it that's changed. But we're still under tax cap, by good, by four thousand dollars, so we're good there. If you have any questions, let me know, and it's up here, it'll be posted as soon as you guys sign off on it, so tomorrow I'll be posting it to the website and all that good stuff, so if you have any questions, just let me know on that.
Cool.
All right. And then, what else is we gonna talk about? What else do I have? The Village Hall Fire Department assessability renovations, Ben and I met with the Louise from the Zar. We do have to change our stop a little bit, the, the initial estimates came in a lot higher than we had yesterday, so we're working on just kind of drilling down to what we really need, trying to get those numbers back into the range that we're thinking of, or we're gonna have to go get some more money from somebody. I have first field speed limit on my list, Chip sent an email this week with a draft of that, which is actually just revised. Yeah.
I was working on it.
Yeah.
Forgot to take.
So, that's, I've taken your packages to review, as well as the short-term moratorium, which is temporary. So those will be, you guys are gonna walk in tonight, just to give information to public for those public hearings, it's gonna be on the twenty. Whatever that's, may, may. Twenty seventh. Right, twenty seventh. Twenty seventh, Tuesday. Yeah. I did, on the taxes, I just wanted to remind everybody that the hundred percent assessment is kicking in this year. So last, last tax cycle, we were at sixty-two percent assessed value, so in the middle, it's now a hundred percent assessed value. So, they will, we, we, some people will see increases, some people will see decreases, okay? But the tax base is affected by that, the good news is we only had to raise our campaign a tiny bit to make up for that, you know, so that's good. But again, if anyone has any questions, come see me, I've got some brochures in the hall, assessments and taxes and everything to help people understand. All right, very good, thank you. Great, okay, committee reports, I have none this evening, Asher Crossing update.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I don't know whether they submitted that ad to Mark yet or not, I'm asking for an update on that or not from Mark. Their attorney confirmation that they submitted that, and they got the response.
And they're supposed to be sending that to, to Mark?
To Mark, so we can review the ad as it has against approval to determine what the.
Okay. We just talked to Mark today, so I'm sure.
Yeah.
Well, he'll be here next month. He'll be here next month, we can, we're gonna have him. I'll look at Creek Dam update, we, as everybody already knows, we have the completed report, we're scheduled for May, hoping, we're gonna shoot for the second. We are gonna shoot for the first day, are they gonna be available? Okay.
I have her back when we got, uh, as of today, I think I got back.
I think we were thinking of pushing it to the second.
Yeah. Yeah, push it to the second, because we, we're gonna have Captain Pearson's come in, persons, and Mark Burke's gonna come in. And then this gives them more time to make sure.
Yeah, have you all seen it?
I did.
You did, but no one else.
See what?
The, the.
The draft.
The draft.
Oh, I looked at it, yeah.
The draft report from Gomez Sullivan, we got the email.
I did?
No, no.
I looked at it.
Just take a peek, it's in there.
Yeah.
And then, it's planned on the twenty-seventh of them coming in, and we can, at that time, ask any questions, let, you know, I'm sure some sort of PowerPoint or something that they'll have, so that people can see visually what they're, what they're talking about. Okay. All right, so five twenty-seven. Spring Street, licensing, anything on that, where are we?
So, the, we've exchanged drafts of that license agreement, and we're getting close to being finalized, but that reminds me, because the mayor was not here last meeting, do you, she signed, mayor, were you giving the, the other one, the school street one? Can I get those?
What are we doing here?
So we're, so basically, the last thing I think we need to finalize, the Spring Street one, is from them a cost estimate for work, because we're gonna have to have them, either post a bond or put money in escrow for that.
Okay, and this is for the.
This is for the sewer license agreement, because they need to occupy public right-of-way to hook up to the sewer, which is only where.
It's west.
And it's west from the building. West of Spring, there's a little block there. Right, between Saicar and. Yeah, so we're, we're giving them a license agreement to run their private sewer line through the public right-of-way to hook up to the sewer, because it's, it doesn't run right by the building.
Yeah, they have no other.
Chris, isn't that west?
It's very similar to the school street.
It's west.
It is, it's west Spring Street.
West?
Yeah, it's west Spring Street, but Spring Street, that's not.
This is for the, that, that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, awesome.
West Spring Street. That's why you were confused.
Oh, why?
It just says Spring Street.
Oh, it just says, it's west.
It's west.
Do we have to do the same thing for Volker?
For what?
For them to, for Volker to tie him?
No, because there's a sewer that runs. They already have, but, they already, that was existing, I mean, that is. Yeah, these ones are because, these are situations where the village sewer main doesn't actually run right by the property, so that we don't have one that goes down School Street, I guess.
Yeah, so they're going about a hundred and fifty feet of mine, memory serves correct? From their, from their property towards our sanctuary manhole.
So, basically, what I mean, I mean, so they're gonna have a license agreement, but they're gonna be responsible, you know, it's a, I, I'd say, so, it's gonna be their responsibility.
So, once we issue the licensing agreement, then they can move forward?
Shy of you, sure, they're gonna get any permits approved.
Yeah, I mean, they're sure they need to get whatever permits they need from the building department, I mean, they got their site plan approval, so, but they still need to get, you know, they're gonna need to actually pull their permits from the building department.
Are they even able to apply for a permit without the licensing agreement? Just out of curiosity.
I, 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 yeah, I don't see why not, I mean, they're not gonna, because as long as the licensing agreement is in place by the time they have their sufficiency, I don't see what, but anyway, we should have that finalized, and I don't know yet, I don't know why they're not doing the work, and they have to pull the street.
All right, the chicken coop local law, is public area protected with chicken coop, change in regulations for chicken coop?
Those are all, those are all the changes that are reflected, they're basically, would make our law essentially near the town law.
You're good. So, if anybody has any questions, we took out a couple of things we had discussed last month. And we agreed to cost a permit at one fifty, or two years.
Yeah, that's not, that's not in the local law, that's what our local law says, you just set that by resolution from time to time. So you will need to adapt the resolution to do that.
Sorry, after this, let me do the dress.
Yeah. All right, very good, I have nothing else, Deputy Mayor Torrey, please.
Thank you, Mayor Hunt. Committee reports, have nothing on zoning to report, and nothing important on H P C. Environmental did meet on Monday, and we're going forward with our Earth Day celebrations, which will be on June seventh. Again, we have a lot of great vendors coming, including Dare to Repair Cafe, so I'm gonna repeat myself, if you have anything you need repaired, bring it, and they'll repair it for free, it could be bicycles, it can be a toaster oven, it can be a sewing machine, Halloween figures, anything you have at home, a lamp that needs repair, come in and bring it, sign up through Dare to Repair Tool Library, and bring it in, and they'll repair it for free, so that's our big one on Earth Day. We've also been working on Greenup Williamsville, I'm very happy to report that many businesses signed up for Greenup Williamsville, including Trish Brown and the Eagle House. All in all, we had fourteen businesses sign up this year, and what was really pleasurable was going to every business and meeting individual owners and speaking to them. We have such a great village, people have no idea the stories behind every business, and it's so enlightening and lovely to hear. So I really want to commend the business owners who've come to the village and set up shop, and continue to provide such great service to us residents and people who come to visit, top-notch. And walking around the village, I was so impressed how clean everything is, thank you, also our D P W, amazing, the parks look spectacular, the businesses have done a lot of cleaning, they're gonna start planting now, I mean, I'm so impressed with everybody on board for Clean Up Williamsville this year. I mean, thank you, thank you, I applaud you all. So, being that said, our Park Day cleanup with the Greenup Williamsville has changed to Bio Swells Bonanza instead. So, that was Sophie's, yeah, good, I, I liked it, Bio Swell Bonanza. So what we're gonna do on May third, we had planned to do a Clean Your Park Day, and clean throughout the village, but it's unnecessary. So, the Bio Swells on Spring Street need a bit more weeding, so we're gonna meet on May third at ten A. M. in front of the mill, and we have a lot of volunteers, I sent out emails to everybody, and they're gonna sign the waiver electronically, and that includes parishioners from the Randall Church, we have Williamsville South High School coming, we have environmental people coming, Parks people coming, Glen Park Droid people coming, we have Boy Scouts coming, so a large array, and they're meeting in front of the mill, and what we're gonna do is, thanks to the D P W, they're gonna bring compost, first, we're gonna weed the Bio Swells along Spring Street only, do the little weeding that's necessary, plant little baby plants that were picked up at Michler's, we have two hundred and fifty little baby plants, we're gonna plant those, and then we're gonna lay out compost, and then we're going to sprinkle crimson, crimson, what is it?
Crimson.
Clover seeds on top of the compost. So, it's gonna, if, right now, I'm figuring six to seven people per Bio Swell, and I think we're gonna have that number, believe it or not, and I informed Sweet Jenny's Howard that we're gonna be working on the Bio Swells that morning, it'll take us at least a couple of hours, but I'm so excited, because number one, we're gonna have Alexandra teaching us what to plant, how to plant, how to maintain them, she's gonna give us a tutorial, so anybody who comes and wants to learn about gardening, come to this event, even if you don't want to bring a shovel and your gloves, come, you can learn about natives, you can learn about the Bio Swells, you can learn about how important it is to grow natives now, so I welcome anybody, please, any age group is welcome, it's family-friendly, it's accessible for everyone, so it'll be a great event, thank you.
Very good.
Yeah, okay, the next is No Moe May, which piggybacks on natives. No Moe May in the village is when we ask, it's a volunteer participation, where people reduce cutting their lawns in the month of May. Okay, I'm not asking you to completely stop, but I have learned, and I don't know if you read the news or listen to the news, but according to the entomologists at Washington State University, honeybee colonies are projected to decline by seventy-five percent this year. Seventy-five percent, and the question is why? Because nutrition deficiencies, they don't get enough native flowers, you have to plant natives. Mite infestations, viral diseases, and pesticide exposure. So it's so important to stop using pesticides on your lawns and start planting more natives, and that's what we're gonna do in the Bio Swells. We're gonna plant natives, and I beg everybody, plant natives, please, and cut back on the mowing in May, because right now, the bees, you'll see them buzzing around, they go after the dandelions are coming up now, they love the crocuses, they love the little snowbells that are, that are coming up, you see them buzzing around, so don't, please don't start cutting your dandelions every week, let them come up, you know, let them blossom for a few weeks, even if you only mow once in May, it'd be so beneficial to our pollinators, and I beg people, you know, just give these bees, these pollinators are brave, because they need it, because they provide us the food, you know, if we extinguish every pollinator, guess what, we're not gonna eat, we're done. So as a species, a human species, we can make a change, and I'm begging everybody, make a change, please, thank you very much.
Didn't we have last year with pushing the No Moe May?
Oh, we did, this is our third, for four years even.
But under our, you need to do that on an annual basis.
Yeah, so we do a resolution on an annual basis. But, but as I said, this year is more important than ever, okay? And thank you very much, and that's all I have.
And it's the anniversary, anything?
No, other than what we just talked about, the, the ice cream, and I don't know, do we have anything else, Sophie, anything other news to report? Because last week I reported that we're going to.
Okay, well, I guess we can tell them about June twenty-sixth then, so that's the anniversary of the vote to incorporate the village. Also happens to be the last day of school for a lot of kids in Williamsville, so we thought we would shut down Glen Avenue and have a chalk and bubbles party to celebrate, and then there might be a few fun surprises that.
Yeah, gonna be working on.
So we're doing more fun stuff, so, that'll be June twenty-sixth.
And in the evening?
Oh, and then we'll have that all cleaned up, so that in the evening, the grownups can enjoy music on May.
And the section house?
And that's July.
Oh, that's right, so what date is that? We're gonna get.
July twenty.
Okay, all right, we'll wait, we'll wait for that surprise, all right, thank you, all right. Yep, that's all I have.
Very good, thank you, Deputy Mayor Torrey. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Starting with traffic and safety, we're, again, working on feedback from village residents as they express concerns about areas in the village that they'd like to see enhanced safety. Big topic last session was the Watts recommendations, which the committee recommended all the options, and would like to get together at our next meeting with one of the representatives from Watts, if possible, just to talk about, you know, it's, it's not gonna, this, if we're gonna put everything that's on the pages in place, but to kind of look at it from a strategic standpoint, and, you know, they're, they're curious about cost and, and how you would sequence, you know, making those implementations. One of the topics that we were discussing last session, but I'll bring it up again, based on some of the ownership at George's, was expressing concern about the, the traffic flow at Worley and Arrow, and I, you know. And I, you know, being that they're, they've been a business there for a couple of years now, that there's no way to cross the street there, there's no sidewalk. And that's, you know, I'm sure, looking at their own business and also Bosie's was brought into the mix on the conversation, but, you know, looking at it, that that's kind of a multi-jurisdictional intersect, which adds to the complexity of it. But, you know, being, being the committee, they, they look to the village to take a proactive role in starting in conversations with some of these other municipalities and, you know, seeing whether or not there's any kind of solutions that could be.
What would be the recommendation? Sidewalks and?
Well, you know, there's, sidewalks are one. You know, they, I've never seen it, but, you know, they say that there are kids that walk to Bosie's. There's no sidewalks along Arrow. We have a small little section that's not at, from the corner, it's like down a ways before Bosie's. Our side, well, I think the village sidewalk goes to just over the creek.
Yeah, it ends at the bridge.
Ends at the bridge. But then, I think it turns into Amherst at that point, and then there's part to Cheek to Wagga.
Yeah, we go for a ways, Amherst is on the other side, and then we bow toward Cheek to Wagga to the south.
Right. So, you know, it's, it's one of those areas that would.
County road, you got the throughway there.
What's that, what?
County roads, you got the throughway in Play.
Oh, yeah.
You got the airport nearby, you're familiar with it.
Right, yeah.
Oh, yeah. So, I did see somebody, you know, walk racing along there. And I, you know, yeah, it's, it's not a real safe area for pedestrians around vehicles.
I don't know.
You know, I think we all know that, right? The other.
It used to be the road less traveled.
The old, yes.
Yeah, I would use it, I used it to go to the airport.
And then it's just, you know, it's a lot of traffic. Talked about Hirschfield as far as the speed limit, but we have some residential concern about how vehicular traffic is, is entering into Main Street.
From Hirschfield.
Yeah, from Hirschfield. So we've got a few issues with that street, maybe we should just change the name. But we're gonna be looking into that topic. Traffic and safety, we were gonna get together this, this week, but we're changing the day to May 22nd.
For traffic and safety?
Yeah, maximize participation for this month.
Same time?
Same time. It's a Thursday. So that's traffic and safety, Meeting House.
One thing on the Watts study.
Yeah.
We had the residents here a number of months ago on the northbound, running the northbound.
Academy?
Academy.
Yeah.
And then the eastbound off of Eagle to Academy.
Right.
And then we're specifically complaining about that intersection.
Yeah.
And I don't know how much of the Watts study pertains to that.
Not at the stop sign.
Yeah, and I think that's actually a shortcoming of the study itself. And I think that that particular intersection needs to be addressed.
Yeah, we had had some conversation around that and, and the solution that was being floated was the raised crosswalk.
Yeah.
Because you can't put a speed home there at a, at a stop sign. But you could put a raised crosswalk.
Like Glen Avenue, same idea, right?
Yeah, so that, that was added as far as a footnote to the study.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
I have one other thing as well, real quick. Somebody from environmental mentioned that the stop sign at Milton where Natalia's is, that it's so high, you really can't see it from the car. And they wonder why it's so high.
I'll have to take a look at that, but I hadn't noticed that one.
I don't know, see, I haven't, I didn't go over there, I thought maybe you would know offhand. But one of them is so high that when you're sitting in your car, visually, you can't even see it.
Do they have one of those little Mini Coopers?
No, I'm gonna go myself, I thought maybe it would, yeah, I'm gonna go there and look.
The temporary one, I love it so much.
That's the temporary, not actual stop sign that's at their private entrance.
Is that the one you may be talking about then?
I don't know of any other stop sign in Natalia's.
Well, there's the one on the north side of Milton.
So we would have no say in that anyway, right?
We, we did that, but it's no code that is.
I'm gonna go over there and look, because I'm not sure which one he's talking about.
What do you mean, did we do?
No.
Were you offended the code?
Oh, the stop sign headed west, oh, on the north side, yes. That's seven feet, that's standard, you don't wanna put anything lower. Seven feet, that's where it goes.
Interesting.
And it's weird, it's a weird location, I can see why people would miss it, honestly. You're at, you're at a dead end, you know.
Maybe it's more because you miss it and then you think it's the height and it's really not the height, is that possible?
It's a standard height.
Yeah.
Seven, is it seven minimums? You know, knock your head on it.
All right, thanks.
On the Meeting House, we didn't meet the last time, people were away, so they couldn't get a quorum for it. But the topic of audiovisual improvements, we did have an audiovisual tech come in. And there's some recommendation right off the bat in regard to some of the major component that would be put into place that would allow us to upgrade that system immediately and then have the ability to expand over time, so it's not, you know, something that has to be added to or major component. It's something that we can grow with.
Okay.
So we're waiting to get the specs on that, but.
So what would that include, like sound and visual?
Yes, yeah, so, you know, the projector, but then the, the, the main, well, the main unit. Forget the word for it. But, you know, the control, the control mechanisms.
The motherboard type?
Motherboard, you know, the flux capacitor.
Okay.
So.
Receiver?
We had the, Marty was there the other day for a Lehigh presentation. How about thirty people, was that it?
I don't know, yeah, twenty.
Twenty, thirty people.
Was it twenty? You like it, was it good?
I wasn't feeling it.
I thought it was great.
I missed it too.
Very interesting.
Yeah.
But, you know, and they're continuing with their, putting their series together for that, so, and a lot of, a lot of action going on there. Bookings throughout the months, you know, they're, seem pretty steady.
Very steady, every day, so that's not gonna change anytime soon.
Sure.
Youth and Rec, again, we finished up the Easter egg hunt. And that was a little participation this year, which I think could be attributed to the weather. I mean, it was really kind of cold and nasty.
Pretty snowy up till last week, actually, right?
It was just cold.
Yeah. But it was still fun.
The bunnies were cold, too.
You know, that we have a leadership change coming there.
Yeah.
We're looking to get, see who we can get to replace.
You need more members as well, right?
Yeah, membership we could use. Their next event is Friday, May 16th, which is Family Bingo Night at the Meeting House. And prizes and books and all sorts of fun. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Celeste. I will say Family Bingo Night is a lot of fun. Enjoy that, get a chance, take advantage of it.
Have a kid, you don't have to have a kid.
You can borrow one. All right, thank you, Trustee Celeste. Trustee Hunt?
The tree board should have picked up the sap leaves.
Yep.
On Saturday, they were planning that. And we're done with the plantings now?
Got three more to go in.
Okay, got it. And then the lalcheen on Main Street looks awesome.
Yeah.
Excellent. Beautification is rolling along, they will have our proclamation for Debbie later on tonight. There is an interest on renaming the committee. So they'll be proposing something they're gonna work on over the summer, what they wanna rename it to. Very exciting, of course, about the work being done by the DPW at Garrison Park and then the upcoming plans for 1812. WBA, we're, there is this event, the Boutique Crawl, that is scheduled for July and October, on Saturday. What I'd like to see is that the individual entities can apply for the permit for that day, but we would waive the permit fee.
I thought we were gonna do a seasonal one.
No, that's a different.
That's a different, that's another different one, okay.
Yeah, this is just for these.
Two days.
Specific dates, the 12th of July and the 4th of Saturday.
I was confused a little bit. Now, these are just people, I mean, businesses that already exist in the village who wanna do, use the sidewalk, right?
Yes.
They're not bringing in additional vendors, right? Because I was a little confused to that.
Yes, we are.
Oh, they are bringing additional vendors.
Support small businesses back there.
Yeah, see, that's where I was, I kinda wasn't sure what we should do about that.
Well, these are the locations in the village that would need to apply for the permit.
Right. Well, either way, they should apply for a permit, they would be charged or not, we have to decide.
Yeah, we would return them, we were just, Trish and I were just talking about what they would need, because of course, we need certificate of insurance and other things. So anybody who's coming in, who's not in a brick and mortar retail, would also need to do the same thing, so we have it on file.
Yep.
I, I saw this, briefly saw this email when, last Saturday, and, and I, I think it's a good idea to, to let the fee be waived, just to bring in some more.
Good stuff, too.
Yeah. Some more vibrancy in business to the village on those two days, it's only two days. Anything else, of course, would need proper permit and permit fee. But, but I don't think it's a bad idea.
No, it looks like a lot of fun, actually.
It does, it looks like a lot of fun, I think it's a goodwill effort to help support, you know, we, we, you know, negotiated really well with the, with the Music on Main, you know, businesses, and this is our retail side. So I think it would be nice to give them a little, little something to boost, you know, the, some of those I look at and I think, you know what, they're smaller, you know, I wouldn't, they're, they're very, they're, they're just kind of, you know, not a huge, a huge business that we would really need to impose that fee for the two days.
I'm fine with it.
I think it's, it's a nice idea, so if everybody's all right with it, we can waive that for just those two days.
Yeah.
Well, was it?
Yeah, we don't have necessarily an organized event permit.
Right.
It's kind of, that might be something that we would look at as well. But, yeah, I think this is a great idea. The other point was on if the retail outlets wanna put a table out or a rack of clothes or something along those lines. So we do have a street peddler's permit, street peddler vendors, right? It's a seasonal permit for a hundred dollars for ninety days. So my thought was that we make it a street peddler's retail, street retail permit. Phrase it in some way.
Yeah.
So that if they wanna put a table out in front of their place, just for the retail.
What's?
It's not the peddler's, it's the peddler's.
No, peddlers is different, so this would be more like a retail village, retail establishment sidewalk sale.
Peddlers is like if door to door, they have to get background checks.
Right, that's different.
Ninety day.
It is different, but the permit that we're describing would be similar in that it's a one-time fee for the year.
For the season?
Yes.
For a ninety day period.
Yeah, ninety day period.
So it's kind of similar to that because that is a ninety day period as well. But it would be a separate line.
Yeah.
In a separate item, so we have to look at it separately, but it would only be for retail.
Right, correct.
And it just stays without any code guidelines, one table, whatever it is that we, do we have anything written on that for a sidewalk sale? I mean, we don't have to look at, we'll have to look at that and see.
We have a sidewalk sale item up here.
On the.
Right, or permit.
Yeah.
But I don't know that we clarify, because we don't want fourteen tables and five racks out in front of the store. But, you know, you can't block the sidewalk, it's all these different, you know, they have to understand there's gonna be parameters. So if we don't have something in the code, we'll just have to.
Could it be weather permitting season, May to October? I think it's for places like Pumpkins or Road that just wanna put a sale rack or a table out, right?
Well, where?
Instead of just ninety days, could it be like, just like a weather permitting? Like, they're not gonna have it out throughout your lawn, or even every single week down to a week, but like if it, could it be a little bit longer than the ninety days to cover the, cover a period, the hundred dollars?
So maybe May 15th to September 15th type thing.
Like maybe four months, hundred and twenty days, maybe, that'd be about it.
Yeah. Well, you had, oh, previous years, there was always like a Halloween type event, and you didn't have it last year.
There was nobody to organize it.
Yeah, but is that what you're talking about, because you wanna extend it, would you bring back the Halloween event?
We are bringing back the Halloween.
See, that's, would that be included or would that be separate? Because that's where they also utilize the outside, you know, they bring people in for the Halloween event, they give out candy, but they also sell their goods. And I remember that, previous years, we had it, last year was the first time we even had it for years. And I was wondering, oh, what happened? It was kind of fun, always. We light up the lights, remember, we do all that.
That's a different thing. So. Goes back, maybe we, we go back to this event.
That's what I mean, you have to be careful, right.
This event permit concept.
So you have to be careful where you wanna cut, with the cutoff days.
Right. So that's why I was thinking September 15th.
I think that's good enough.
Because you get into school, beginning of school year.
Yeah, I think it's plenty.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's plenty.
There'll be hundred and twenty days, which would be fine.
May 15th, September 15th.
Plenty.
Yeah.
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 And that gives them the flexibility and, and it encourages an activity that we wanna have.
That's only one weekend day. That includes like only one Sunday or Saturday, right?
No, it would be anytime that the retailer's open.
Yeah.
Well, we have to establish that, you know what I mean?
Well, then, just like the peddler's permits for every day of the year, it would be similar in that respect. And then if it became an issue, then we address the issue if it, if it became one.
Sorry, you said May 15th to September, what?
Fifteen to fifteen.
Yeah.
So what are you gonna call it, retail?
Well, we have to, we'll have to write it and confirm, you know, public period.
The code says you need a mayor's permit for other things is sidewalk sales as well as street vending or peddling.
The hack, that, that, crap.
Such a old fashioned word, payment.
Yeah, no, although peddler or street vendor is actually, as a person offering goods or services for people while traveling door to door or on the public streets, yeah, so if somebody's got a hot dog cart or something, that would qualify. As well as these, anybody selling anything out the street. So you got a permit, but then you still gotta put whatever conditions the first thing you want.
Right.
On those, on those permits. As long as they are, whatever conditions you are imposing are, you know, there to, to, sort of, which are the public permits.
Okay, yeah, right. So we don't want to block the sidewalks, we don't want excess. Okay, yeah, right. We don't want to block the sidewalks, we don't want excess tables.
So we would basically have a seasonal sidewalk.
Yeah, you could do that.
Yeah, that's what.
Now, for the boutique crawls, there's no problem with giving their certificate of insurance, not a, you know, dog permit, but community. For those two days, for that, for those, that, so we will resume. Waiving, okay. We just did it informally in the past, but.
So that's what we've done at the.
We can, we can, no, we can formalize it, I'd rather, then it's in the minute, then it's official, and then if future boards wanna change it, we can. So, yes, we will resume, please.
Excellent.
Tonight or next?
Oh, no, next week, maybe they, we've got one more meeting before fifteen.
Okay.
They can start to get their permit, though, if they would like to.
Beautiful. And then.
Everybody's okay with a hundred dollars. It'd be a hundred dollar fee. It's where I was thinking we should go, same as the street vendor.
Yeah, for the season?
For the season, great.
Yeah, that's very fair.
Again, this is an activity we wanna encourage.
Yeah, we do, we do, we encourage. Main street activity, walkability, walkable walk in the shop.
Exactly.
Ten Thousand Villages was my favorite.
Mine, too. Oh, my gosh, I just said so much.
That concludes my remarks.
Okay. All right, thank you, Trustee Hunt, Trustee Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have Arts, Culture, and Diversity can always use volunteers. This is a committee of four, four ladies on this committee, and they do amazing things, led by their chairperson, Donna Delano Kerr. And this most recent event was Friday night, First Ladies Jazz, big band and a poetry reading, and it was amazing. There was probably, what did we say? Oh, you were there, Doug. At least seventy-five people, at lea, the place was filled. It was a lot of fun. It was very moving. I have to say that I loved it. They sang that Burt Bacharach song, you know, What the World Needs Now Is Love, so there was poetry speaking to it, and then Donna singing, and then the jazz ladies playing it, and I was like goosebump. It was really touching to me. I just have to say, yeah, it was, What the World Really Does Need Now Is Love, and.
I love that song.
I do, too. So it was a great event, and they've just planned some wonderful things. So their next thing is our, the Juneteenth Festival in Island Park, June twenty-first, and it's noon to five, I believe. Right, so there's some big, I mean, they have a pretty good lineup. I don't know if you're going to go through some, but they have the Colored Musicians Jazz Club coming in to play music, vibrant strings. They have speakers, food, all kinds of stuff, so I think it's gonna be excellent.
What are the times again?
It's a Saturday, I believe, June twenty-first, noon to five, around noon to five. So, yeah, so there's that. So again, if anybody would love to be on this event, you know, be on this committee, we would love more volunteers, more ideas for events coming up in the future, so. That's Arts, Culture, Diversity. Their meeting is May eighth, seven o'clock, Village Hall. Glen Park Joint Board Meeting, next one is May fourteenth, seven o'clock, Village Hall, and they will be at the event this Saturday for the Clean Up the Parks Day, so if anybody's interested in what they do, come on over to that event, you can talk to some of the members there. And then the last one, the Parks Committee will be meeting May twentieth at seven o'clock. This time, they're at Island Park. They're not meeting here in Village Hall, they'll be just across the parking lot here. Things are going really well with them. They also have a small committee. There's, what, seven members on that one, doing really well. The most recent thing they're talking about, it's just in the very preliminary talking stages, was potentially putting like a walking track around South Lawn Park, so it's like a running track, walking track. It's just an idea. There's a lot of parts to it that would have to come up, but they'll be bringing back more information in future meetings, so just kind of mentioning it. And that's all I have. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Trustee Jackson. All right, Department Hunt reports, Village Attorney Graciel.
Nothing for the, sorry.
Okay, anything else?
We're starting twenty-seven.
Anything else? And DPW crew chief, fill in in.
No, nothing.
That's fine, okay. All right, it is seven oh seven. I think we should go in the second session.
Yeah.
Okay, I should go in the second.
You can somebody else.
I think we should go in the second session.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll be back.
We'll be back.
Whenever I'm ready, okay.
Oh, no. She just told me she was going.
Can I turn air conditioning on?
Which is usually how that works.
Right. Yeah. Where did I lose my water? There we go.
I see a very tan man in there.
Yes. Of course. All right. Ready to roll? All right, we're all ready to roll. Very good.
I brought my camera for the picture.
Oh, good, 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 good. Ready? Everybody ready to go? All right, oop, that clock, we've got to get that fixed, it's making me crazy. That's okay, we need a good microphone there. Need a good microphone there.
I don't know. I think we should have one.
I like that. Oh, there you go. There we go. Okay, thank you, Ben. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Village of Williamsville Village Board meeting for April 28, 2025, beginning at 7:34 PM. We will start this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance led by a very important guest, Deb Habs.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Administrator Canal, roll call, please.
Mayor Hunt?
Here.
Trustee Hunt?
Here.
Trustee Celeste?
Here.
Trustee Jackson?
Okay, thank you. I would like to just take a moment to express the village's condolences on the passing of Michael Kelsey, the manager of the Irishman Pub and Eatery. It was a very sad sudden loss for that business and for the village and his family, and we just wanted to express our condolences publicly for the Irishman and for his family as well. Okay, motion for approval of the April 14, 2025 minutes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, rules of procedure. Just want to review the rules of procedure. Anybody who would like to speak to the board and address the entire board, not an individual member, is allowed to approach the podium and address the board. You have three minutes. We do time that. Anything over three minutes, we will ask you to please sit down and continue next time when we have our next board meeting, if you'd like. But I just want everybody to understand the rules for procedure, and so at this time, I would like to make a motion for suspension of rules for public participation.
Second.
Roll call, vote, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, vote, please.
Sorry, Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Torry?
Aye.
Trustee Celeste?
Aye.
Trustee Hunt?
No.
Trustee Jackson?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if anybody would like to step up to the podium and address the board, please feel free to do so.
Good evening.
Good evening, Tom.
Hello, it's board members. My name is Tom Frank, and I want to thank you for my three minutes to give a presentation. I was at the town board meeting, the work session, then I came here for the work session, then I went back there, and now I'm here, and I got to go back there. Really, the village and the town should have, like, on a quarterly basis, a joint meeting. And I would just like to bring this up to your attention, as far as they passed a resolution, there was a presentation regarding the month of May is the Building Public Safety Month for, you know, looking at your building. And what I want to bring to your attention is the Elica Creek is the lifeblood of the Village of Williamsville and the town of Amherst, as far as the built environment is based on the creek out there, and where you're sitting, there's underground streams. And as far as the climate issue, that there's things that are going on with the New York State Regional Economic Development Council and the, let's see, the other one has to do with the, oops, come on, be here, oh, here it is, the Western New York Greenway Planning Summit meeting, that the Elica Creek, the town of Amherst is, you know, as far as the built environment, is based on hydrogeographic topography as far as the groundwater, and as far as that, these are things that have to be looked at, and I'm an advocate for a resolution from you, of the Glen Park Joint Board, that I'm advocating for this resolution as a lead agency for the Amherst Central Park Greenway, okay, that interconnects all the parks, and this is a part of a statewide program that has some 2,500 miles of that this is the greenway, as far as the plan, that it's a work in progress, that this is a part of it, this is a strategic geographic location, as far as the model, and as far as the village and the town, to update the, as far as an intermunicipal cooperation agreement on a long term, that we're looking at a five-year development project-
Okay, thank you, Tom.
-that extends through 2050.
All right, thank you, yep.
And there are two essential parts, one is-
Thank you, Tom.
-the fact that that is tributary of-
Yes, Tom.
-Donawanda Creek and the Niwa River Greenway, as well as the incorporation of the village in 1850-
I know, okay. Tom, thank you.
...was for the purpose of connecting Elica Creek to the-
Thank you, Tom.
-here canal, and that's what we're going to do-
Tom, three minutes is up, thank you.
-in your spare time, when you're not doing anything.
Yep, in my spare time, when I'm not doing anything, absolutely. Come back next meeting, I-
And I got to go back and present the same information for your joint resolution to the town of Amherst.
Okay, thank you.
Again.
Thank you for advocating for all of us.
Thank you, you do good work.
Thank you. All right.
David Schmidt, Village President, I just, this might be a little bit early because you just had the traffic meeting, but all my neighbors that know I go to meetings regularly are always asking me, oh, the Great Crosswalk's just on Academy, are they going to be on Eagle Evans as well, they keep asking all that, because they know I go to meetings and they have families to watch, or they can't make every meeting.
It's still a traffic and safety, we did discuss it during work session, we're still looking at all of those options.
I know, because they just keep asking me stuff like, are we going to have one on Eagle and Evans, one on Eagle, or just on Academy by the school, they don't ask that.
It's, we're still looking at it, we're waiting for recommendations from traffic and safety.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We will start this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance led by a very important guest, Deb Habs.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Administrator Canal, roll call, please. Here.
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 Okay, thank you. I would like to just take a moment to express the village's condolences on the passing of Michael Kelsey, the manager of the Irishman Pub and Eatery. We, it was a very sad, sudden loss for that business and for the village and his family. And we just wanted to express our condolences publicly for, for the Irishman and for his family as well. Okay? Motion for approval of the April 14th, 2025 minutes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Rules of procedure. Just want to review the rules of procedure. Anybody who would like to speak to the board and address the entire board, not an individual member, is allowed to approach the podium and address the board. You have three minutes. We do time that. Anything over three minutes, we will ask you to please sit down and continue next time when we have our next board meeting, if you'd like. But I just want everybody to understand those, the rules for procedure. And so at this time, I would like to make a motion for suspension of rules for public participation.
Second.
Roll call vote, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote, please.
Sorry, Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
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 No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if anybody would like to step up to the podium and address the board, please feel free to do so. Good evening, Tom.
Hello, it's board members. My name is Tom Frank, and I want to thank you for my three minutes to give a presentation. I was at the town board meeting, at the work session, then I came here for the work session, then I went back there, and now I'm here, and I gotta go back there. Really, the village and the town should have, like, on a quarterly basis, a joint meeting. And I would just like to bring this up to your attention, as far as, they passed a resolution, there was a presentation regarding, the month of May is the Building Public Safety Month for, you know, looking at your building. And that, what I want to bring to your attention is the, Elica Creek is the lifeblood of the Village of Williamsville and the town of Amherst, as far as the built environment is based on the creek out there. And where you're sitting, there's underground streams. And that, as far as the climate issue, that, there's things that are going on with the New York State Regional Economic Development Council, and the, let's see, the other one has to do with the, oops, come on, be here. Oh, here it is. The Western New York Greenway Planning Summit Meeting, that the, the Elica Creek, the town of Amherst is, you know, as far as the built environment, is based on hydrogeographic topography, as far as the groundwater. And as far as, that, these are things that have to be looked at. And I'm an advocate for a resolution from you, of the Glen Park Joint Board, that I'm advocating for this resolution as a lead agency for the Amherst Central Park Greenway, okay, that interconnects all, all the parks. And this, this is a part of a statewide program that has some 2,500 miles of, that this is the greenway, as far as the, the plan, that it's a work in progress, that this, this is a part of it, this is a strategic geographic location, as far as the, the model, and as far as the, the village and the town, to update the, as far as an intermunicipal cooperation agreement.
Okay.
On a long term, that we're looking at a five-year development.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
That extends through 2050.
All right, thank you, yep.
And there are two essential parts. One is.
Thank you, Tom.
That that is tributary of.
Yes, Tom.
Down to Wanda Creek and the Niwa River Greenway, as well as the incorporation of the village in 1850.
Tom, thank you.
Was for the purpose of connecting Elica Creek to the Erie Canal, and that's what we're going to do.
Tom, three minutes is up, thank you.
In your spare time, when you're not doing anything.
Yep, in my spare time, when I'm not doing anything, absolutely. Come back next meeting, I.
Go back and present the same information for your joint resolution to the town of Amherst.
Okay, thank you.
Again.
Thank you for advocating for all of us.
Thank you. You do good work.
Thank you. All right.
David Schmidt, Village President. I just, this might be a little bit early because you just had the, the traffic meeting, but all my neighbors that know I go to meetings regularly are always asking me, oh, the Great Crosswalks just on Academy, are they gonna be on Eagle-Evans as well? They keep asking all that, just because they know I go to meetings and they have families to watch, or they can't make every meeting.
It's still a traffic and safety, we did discuss it during work session, we're still looking at all of those options.
I know, because they just keep asking me stuff like, are we gonna have one on Eagle and Evans, one on Eagle, or just on Academy by the school? They don't ask that.
It's, we're still looking at it, we're waiting for, we're waiting for recommendations from traffic and safety.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing nobody else step to the podium, make a motion to close suspension of rules for public participation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good. Best part of the evening for me tonight, proclamations. And I say that really from the bottom of my heart, because Deb Habs doesn't really know this, I'm sure, but she made the smallest gesture to me when I became Chair of HPC. And you were the secretary, you were still taking the notes for our meetings. And she would gently nudge me in an email and say, you might want to CC so-and-so, you might want to make sure that when you make that request, you include, do you remember what you did for me? I never forgot that. It showed me the true nature of Deb Habs and her commitment, and I nev, I will always appreciate it, because it was a delivery that was not negative, but was very helpful. And she sent it in just the right tone that I thought, ooh, gosh, I need to do this, and I don't know anything yet. And I've always appreciated that, so I do thank you from the bottom of my heart, Deb. It was always, and I don't think I've ever really been able to express it to you, but taking this opportunity to do that, because it was always there for me. So, when this email came through from NICOM, the New York Conference of Mayors and Municipal Officials, to honor public officials or community members who have served for 25 years or more by awarding them a certificate of public service, the first person that came to my mind was Deb Habs, because I was also liaison to beautification in the beginning of my first year as a trustee. And again, very gently introduced me and, and let me dig in the dirt with the ladies, which I appreciated, even though I really was not as well-versed, not as well-versed as, as all of you. So I appreciated that as well. So, when I saw that in December, I thought, oh my gosh, public service, this is, you know, we've had the privilege of having Deb Habs be in our world, and it's, it was time to give back. So, and to recognize you for that. So I immediately forwarded this to Sophie, I said, can we do this for Deb Habs? And she said, of course. And, at the same time, we'll do an actual mayor's proclamation as well, because we started to put it all together and realized, wow, we've really been fortunate. So, with that being said, the New York Mayor, New York State Conference of Mayors and Municipal Officials presents this 30-year certificate of public service to Deb Habs of Williamsville. In recognition of 30 years of distinguished public service to your community, the New York State Conference of Mayors is pleased and honored to publicly acknowledge your dedication and commitment. So that's what started this ball rolling, because I, I knew, I knew you deserved it. Furthermore, and from the Office of the Mayor of the Village of Williamsville, New York, a proclamation for Deb Habs. Whereas former deputy clerk and dedicated volunteer Deborah A. Habs has served her local community through the Village of Williamsville and its various committees and boards for over 30 years, whereas Deborah A. Habs has shared her wisdom and creativity with the Village of Williamsville and with its residents, and whereas Deborah A. Habs currently serves as the chairperson for the Village Beautification Committee, and whereas Deborah A. Habs has dedicated her life to exemplary volunteerism, stewardship, civil service, and the inspiration of such virtues in others, now therefore, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the Village of Williamsville, on behalf of the Village of Williamsville Board of Trustees and all citizens hereof, I, Christine Hunt, Mayor of the Village of Williamsville, do hereby proclaim the following, that Deborah A. Habs be and is hereby officially commended for her outstanding leadership and service to the community of the Village of Williamsville, that this proclamation be presented to her to serve as a reminder of our gratitude for her dedication and nurturing of our village's natural and built environments, that a copy of this proclamation be made a part of the official records of the Village of Williamsville, New York. Thank you very much, Deb Habs.
Okay, well, I, thank you so much. I want to thank Mayor Hunt and all the village boards, past and present, for wonderful support all of these years, both when I was working here, and also for Beautification Committee and the other, any other committees that I've been on throughout the years. It's been a pleasure, and I'm continuing to be, I'll be a member, but this year will be my last year as Chair. I will be stepping down as Chair of Beautification, and I'm sure one of our other members is, from Beautification, is gonna step forward, or several of them, but right now, what we're doing this year is spreading out the tasks for being a Chair. We are a very active community, or committee, we love to dig in the village dirt, and that's what we do. And so, we've been doing it for many, many years, and I started when Mayor Daniels was the mayor, and Basil Piazza, so that was, you know, a long time ago, many decades. And I was a stay-at-home mom for a few years, and I was looking for something to do, to volunteer in the, in the village. And they said, why don't you come and, come and dig? And we started at the Triangle, was our first, first garden that we worked on. And after that, many, many other gardens, we've added on, and now we're down to three major gardens in the village, Memory Garden, the Mural Garden, which is right outside here, and the Garden of 1812 at Main and Evans. And we're very proud of everything we do, and it wouldn't happen without the committee members, who are so dedicated, so creative, and wonderful, wonderful people. We're always looking for new members, and so, you know, you don't have to even be a village resident, you know, because we're a very active and energetic group, so we're always looking for, for new people that would love to join us, so I want to get the word out on that. So I just want to thank everybody on the board and all my coworkers, also to Ben Villanen and his DPW crew, we couldn't do what we do without them, their mulching and guidance and digging, et cetera, and we appreciate any of the art installations that we've had, they pour the concrete for the statues that we have out there. So it's, it's been a wonderful working relationship that we have with everybody here. So I just want to thank all the friendly faces I see of my, my members that are in my family, and I want to say thank you to my family, because they put up with, you know, Mom, where are you going? I'm going up to, you know, dig in the dirt, okay. And it's fun, it's fun, it's fun. And so, thank you so much, everybody, really appreciate it.
I'm glad to get an opportunity for family members to come up, for the board to come up, for Beautification Committee, I know you'd like the picture, I'm sure you'd like her vote, so you will, this is, this is for you. I don't know which one of them, both of them, if you do, you can, for one of the.
This is my grandson, Nick, who's nine years.
Oh, here you go, there you go. So it's my family and.
You gotta get really close, though.
There you go.
Yeah, that's great, get real close. Cherry, come on in, get closer, Cherry. Oh my gosh, you gotta get closer. All right, get closer, get closer. I know you love each other, so.
Awesome.
You got a mic?
Do you mind if I get to the board? And your family, awesome to stay, there we go, I'll stay as I'm at the meeting. Good job. I'll be on the certificate, there you go.
Thank you, Cherry, nice to see you, thank you.
Oh, you want to do two family first? Let's do family first, and then one with the board, so we have one for our ties.
Get colder down a little lower, sweetie, there you go. Excellent.
Very good, thank you. Amy?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And then one with, are we gonna get one with Eileen's camera?
I don't even know how to use it.
Congratulations, I'm so happy for you, you all deserve.
Well, Jeff's a little, he's wondering why he wasn't invited to the cake and champagne party.
Anybody ever tell you to talk?
See that one right there?
Oh, we need the podium back, oh, we need the podium back, yeah. Public hearing, yeah. All right. And as we move along here, we are, make a motion to open the floor for a public hearing for Local Law Number Four, amending Chapter 112, Section 12A, related to chicken coops.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there's a copy of the changes to the zone, zoning portion, the code. If anybody would like to comment, make public comment on the.
Bye, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening. Okay. Anybody would like to step forward to the podium and, and address the board regarding the amendment of chicken coop law?
I live on Garrison, right near both of the gardens. I just had questions about the, the permit.
Can you state your name, please?
Sorry, yeah, Dana McWhite. I live at 64 Garrison, and I was interested in applying for the permit, I know you guys are still working on it, I understand there's a fee, so I guess my question is just, what is the fee exactly used for?
That's fine.
And then just what the process is, so we can get started on, you know, the coop.
Sure.
Okay. The fee will be $150 for the permit for two years, that includes two, the annual inspections from our safety inspector.
Okay. And is, I guess a follow-up question would be then, do the same types of permits and fees apply to other, like household pets, so like you would have, like, do people have, like, their dogs, you know, like, they have to pay fees for that regularly?
Licenses, yes.
And that's all?
That's, that's through the town, though, we don't handle dogs.
Dogs, okay.
Okay. Chickens. Okay, anybody else? Seeing nobody steps to the podium, make a motion to close the public hearing for Local Law Number Four, amending Chapter 112.
Second.
Section 12A, related to chicken coops. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to reports and resolutions. Under reports, I would just like to remind everybody that we do have Gomez and Sullivan coming in next month, we have not confirmed the date yet, but it should be the end of May, last meeting on the 27th, regarding the report, written, the damn study report that they, that they researched and wrote for us, and I encourage residents and business owners that are interested to attend that, that work session, it will be at 6:00 PM, work session, portion of the meeting, where they will explain the, the solutions they've come up with for us, okay? All right, I move on to motion number one. Make a motion that it be resolved that the following budget transfers are hereby made in the general fund for the 2024-2025 fiscal year, as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution number two, make a motion that it be resolved that the following budget transfers are hereby made in the Glen Park Fund for the 2024-2025 fiscal year, as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number three, be it resolved, make a motion that it be resolved that payroll and vouchers in the amount of $386,046.33, covering the period from 4/7/25 through 4/24/25, are hereby approved as follows, as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Question number four, be it, make a motion that it be resolved that the tentative budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal year has been duly represented to the village board by the budget officer, and a duly advertised public hearing has been held thereon, now therefore, be it resolved pursuant to Section 5-5084 of village law, that the said tentative budget and the salaries and wages as stated in the salary schedule are hereby adopted for the Village of Williamsville for, correction there, not or, okay, for, so as amended.
Second.
For the 2025-2026, 2026 fiscal years, as follows, as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion number five, make a motion that it be resolved that Tyler Fuentes of Williamsville, New York, is hereby appointed as an active member of the Williamsville Fire Department effective May 1st, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number six, make a motion that it be resolved that Peter Caglio. Caglio, thank you, Caglio, I got close, darn it. Peter Caglio, I apologize, Peter Caglio of Williamsville, New York, is hereby appointed as an active member of the Williamsville Fire Department effective May 1st, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, make a motion to go off agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, make a motion that it be resolved that application payment number one and final submitted, and final submitted by E&amp;R General Construction Incorporated in the amount of $102,425 for completion of the one, of 100% of the total contract work installing lines for water service to Island Park is hereby approved to be paid from the capital project number 895 Contractor Budget Appropriation Line and submitted for grant reimbursement. And I, I will say this grant was a county grant from Assemblywoman Jeanne Vinyl.
Yep. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to go back on agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all I have this evening. Deputy Mayor Torry.
Thank you, Mayor Hunt. My reports, I have a few reports. As you know, the village is celebrating Greenup, Williamsville, and I'm asking for volunteers. We're gonna have what they call, what Sophie has named, our big bioswell bonanza this Saturday. So despite, our carts are so clean, and our village is doing so well, that we don't need volunteers to pick up any litter, which is a really good thing. Our DPW did a great job cleaning the parks, and our businesses did a fabulous job cleaning the streets. the streets in the village, that we're going to ask any volunteers to meet us in front of the mill on May 3, Saturday, at 10:00 AM, to do a bioswelle bonanza. The bioswells along Spring Street need a little weeding, and we're going to put down compost and plant some new plants, all local natives, and then cover it with red crimson clover seeds. So anybody is welcome to join. It's a family-friendly event, and it'll probably last about two hours. So if you want to come by, grab your garden gloves and maybe a shovel, and give us a hand. It'll be a fun event, and you'll learn a lot, because we'll have somebody who will instruct us on what bioswells are, and what native plants are, and how you can bring the same back to your home and garden and plant more natives. So you're all welcome. The other report I have is my resolution is going to be on No-Mow May, and I quickly want to read. No-Mow May is a conservation initiative to promote a healthy habitat for people and pollinators. Residents are encouraged to stop mowing or mow less during the second half of May to protect food supplies and habitats for bees and other early-season pollinators. During May, the Village of Williamsville will lax the enforcement of long grass rules to allow dandelions, clover, and common blue violet to bloom and help our local pollinator population find crucial nectar sources. Now, this is really important this year, because I did some research, and in 2025, they expect a decrease of 75% of honeybees this year. So it is so important that you let your lawn grow a little bit. Dandelions are beautiful weeds. We call them weeds, but they're flowers, and they're the first flower that actually feeds the bees. So please, just let your dandelions cover your yard, forget about the pesticides, because we're going to need the bees to feed ourselves. By cutting back lawn mowing in May, you will spend less time and money on your lawn while helping to improve the planet. So please participate. It's a voluntary basis, but I'm asking everybody to participate. Thank you. And then I'll read our resolution, and I can find it. There you go. Be resolved that for the village code, Chapter 11-2D, the village board of trustees have determined for 2025, the period of May 1, 2025 through June 1, 2025, as the period of suspension, prohibition provided for the village code, Chapter 11-2, unlawful growth of weeds, grass, and poisonous plants, subsections A and B, to be more commonly referred to as a period of No-Mow May. So in other words, you will not be fined if you grow your lawn during May. So go for it. Thank you very much. Oh, and I also want to say thank you to the individual who left this pumpkin at my doorstep. I much appreciate it. Thank you. Because I love pumpkins. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, second, I forget. I forgot. All in favor?
Wait a minute. Did I get a second on that? Did I get a good, okay, second. All those in favor? Aye.
I forgot about that.
I do, would like, thank you, Deputy Mayor Torrey, but I would like to add, as you said during work session, that it doesn't mean that you don't have to cut your lawn at all in May, just that you can reduce the number of times that you cut it.
Yeah, you can do many things. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Torrey. I would just like to make one small correction, that the grant for that capital project was from County legislator Jeanne Vinyl. I think I called her an assemblywoman.
Oh, yeah.
She's a county legislator. My bad. Trustee Celeste.
Thank you, Mayor. On reports, I just want to make the announcement that the Village of Williamsville Youth and Recreation Committee will be holding their Family Bingo Night on Friday, May 16, 2025, at the Meeting House. This is a fun event for children and adults alike, and I failed to mention in the work session that the Youth and Rec Committee is also, they have planned their combined Amherst and Williamsville summer movie night in the park, and that is going to take place on August 1.
Oh, that's far away.
And this summer's movie is Transformers 1, which is the best of the Transformers movies. Sorry, I'm not concerned. I'd like to make a motion to go off agenda for a resolution, or two resolutions, actually.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Be it resolved that the village administrator is hereby authorized and directed to publish notice of a public hearing to be held on May 27, 2025, at 7:30 PM to hear all persons interested in communicating on the proposed local law extending the moratorium on short-term rentals in the Village of Williamsville.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
A second resolution, be it resolved that the village administrator is hereby authorized and directed to publish notice of a public hearing to be held on May 27, 2025, at 7:30 PM, to hear all persons interested in communicating on the proposed local law amending Chapter 103, Vehicles and Traffic, lowering the speed limit on Hirschfield Drive to 25 miles per hour.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Motion to go off agenda, or go back on agenda?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Celeste. Trustee Hunt?
No further reports from the work session. There are two resolutions. Number one, resolve that Sarah Gaddy, Erie County Planning, is hereby appointed to Community Plan Action Committee effective immediately.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
And number two, resolve that David Hall, Erie County Planning, is hereby appointed to Community Plan Action Committee effective immediately.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, Trustee Hunt. Trustee Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no further reports from the work session.
Okay. Staff reports. Administrator Canal, can you just, once again, just review the couple of things, actually, community development, the UPS donation?
Oh.
Please, because now that we, the people can see it.
Oh, yes. So the UPSer was generous enough to donate these large, enlarged vintage photographs that are on the Black River Garden Ward. We're going to go up and down Main Street for businesses that we have to store stores for them. And they're double-sided, so while you're shopping in the store, dining in the restaurant, or walking by the window, it'll be a good conversation piece. We have the Jolly Boys logo on it, and then 175th, just so we can make the village a little more festive and historic. We'll also donate a banner that'll go up on the front of Village Hall.
Okay, and the QR code? There will be a QR code?
Thank you very much, Jackie. Jacqueline, excuse me. They're beautiful. Yeah, very impressed.
Okay, and if you could just review briefly, we are having our 175th anniversary, and I just want to briefly review a couple of those informational celebration, upcoming celebration ideas, but the one from Sweet Jenny's and the June 26th party, so people can play.
Oh, yes. So June 25th is going to be the last, or I'm sorry, June 26th, yes, June 26th will be the last day of school for a lot of kids in Williamsville and other districts. So during the day, that is a Thursday, we're going to offer a family-friendly event, like a chalk and bubbles party on Glen Avenue. We'll have some historic-themed activities, just kind of have a fun way to kick off the season right next to Sweet Jenny's. Sweet Jenny's is actually designing a custom flavor for the 175th anniversary. We're interested in having a naming contest for that, so residents will be able to submit their names for that extreme flavor.
Is there a deadline for that? Do we have a deadline?
We don't have one set yet, so they're still working on it at the moment, but you can stay tuned on our Facebook and on our website for announcements for that. And then later in July, on July 25th, that's the anniversary of the village's approval for incorporation from Erie County. We'll have sort of a history exhibition at the Eagle House during the day, and then a dedication of the section house historic marker in the evening. So just kind of a nice way to, you know, have something along with the summer every month to remember and celebrate.
Very good. Thank you. I just appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I want to keep reminding people, it is our anniversary. We've got a lot going on.
Yes.
A lot more years to plan for going forward. Okay, thank you. Anything, Administrator Canal?
I have nothing.
Nothing from, and, Crew Chief Villanen, DPW Crew Chief Villanen.
We are, we'll be finishing up the septic system in Glen Park this week, tomorrow, the next day, so that structure that was built in 1976 will have the bathrooms it was designed to have.
Good.
And the Orchard and Park drainage projects are a little bit delayed. The contract to rent is in conflict with some stolen pool on Orchard and some other ones as well, so that's going to be pushed back about a week or two.
Okay. Fabulous.
All right, very good.
Really excited about the bathrooms.
I know. I saw the backhoe over there today. I was like, oh, they're going to finish them up. I just, I can feel it coming. It's going to be good.
We could.
Oh, we have to have a little grand opening.
You can have that.
All right, very good. Anything else? Everybody else set? Motion adjourned?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Oh, good news.